Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 11, 2019, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Tonight, our pledge to the flag will be led by Eastchester High School senior and Eagle Scout, my son Dylan Eklund. So will everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Great job. Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
For the last time, present.
Oh, my God.
Present.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
And also, for the last time, I am here tonight. So, tonight is going to be the last meeting for myself and Deputy Mayor Tom Giordano. We've decided to use this meeting to say our farewells, give some thanks, and share some moments of our time serving on this board. But we always have a couple of business items, so I'm going to start off with the adoption of minutes and the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting of February 11, 2019. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. We have two resolutions tonight. The first is the Resolution Number One, authorizing setting a budget hearing for April 8, 2019, to consider a tentative budget for fiscal year June 1, 2019 through May 31, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And the last resolution is the approving of vouchers in the amount of $420,000.692.42. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Just a couple of items to note miscellaneous business. There will be a village reorganization meeting on April 1. The village Board of Trustees budget hearing is going to be on April 8. The village budget work session is going to be on Saturday, April 27. And the village special budget adoption meeting will be on April 29. So, I can see that there's going to be a few people, it's going to be pretty busy in the month of April. So, that's just going to bring us right now to some comments from some of our board members and ourselves and some of the members of the public. But we're going to start off tonight with comments from trustee Danny Lang.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So, first, I'd like to start, I'd like to thank both of you for all the advice, direction, genuine interest you have taken in myself and my family. It has been my pleasure to serve under the guidance and leadership of these two fine men. First, Tom. Thank you, thank you for your never-ending support, your words of encouragement, and most of all, your confidence in me, not to mention all the kind words you have for everyone. You must have some super parents. Tom, your gentle, caring approach to our village has become contagious and an inspiration to us all. Some might refer to Tom as calm, cool, and collective. I think better words to describe him would be caring, compassionate, and considerate, all of which you have brought to this board. I will proudly carry the torch you have ignited within me. Getting to know you, Tom, has made me a better person. Your composition will truly be missed. Thank you for your service.
Thank you so much, Danny.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to start by thanking you for my introduction to public service, for pointing me to the Housing Authority, where I began to realize the importance of serving our community and how rewarding it can truly be. I want you to know how grateful I am for the numerous opportunities you have given me, and I will continue to make the most of them. Serving this loving community has brought my family and I so much joy. I can't thank you enough. Since I'm a kid, the great mayor Phil White has always been talked about as being hard-working and tireless. You, Mr. Mayor, are now in that same conversation. We will forever be grateful for the incredible work ethic you have brought to this board. You, sir, also must have some super parents. We should all be so lucky to be able to serve our community as long as, as long as you have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service. And most of all, I'd like to thank their families for lending them to us for all these years. So, Mrs. Eklund, I know you're out there. Dylan, Mrs. Giordano, Andrew and Thomas, thank you for the sacrifice you've made to our village as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Danny. We have a lot of confidence in you. We appreciate those comments. Thank you. Trustee Andino?
Now that Danny stole my speech just before I got up here, just so you all know, so I have to come up with something else to say. I actually did not write anything because it's better for me to speak from the heart. But before I do, I don't want to forget, because I don't want to get in trouble by John Galuzzi, we do have an annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 20, promptly at 11:00 a.m. So, be, be there at the Parkway Oval Field. A year ago, I was elected into office as trustee, and my first order of business was to call all these men and say, hey, let's have, let's have coffee. And I called Mayor Eklund, and I called Tom Giordano, and said, hey, can we have coffee? And we sat, and we got to know each other, and I really enjoyed our conversation and getting to know each other. I felt that we came to an agreement and an understanding about how we would work together, and I was grateful that I did pick up the phone and call them. As time went on, there were things that I didn't know how to do or had questions about. I could pick up the phone and call either one of them, and they generally always answered, which surprised me, and were just very thoughtful, very kind to me. They included me in, in the fold, so to speak, and I really appreciated that. So, I thank them for that. I thank you for your service. This is work that is often thankless. In the year that I've been trustee, I see that the amount of hours that it's taken me and the questions that I've had, I'm a little naive to some things that I'm learning, and they never made me feel like I was stupid. They answered the questions, and they, they enlightened me in those things that I, I wasn't sure about. So, I really appreciate that very much, gentlemen, that I've worked with. And so, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Tom. And Tom, don't cry, I see the tears coming. So, I'm, I'm grateful to have had this opportunity to work with them before they go off. Mayor, I wish you the best in your semi-retirement, back and forth to Florida. I appreciate it, and I'll see you soon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your service. You're a great public servant. We really enjoyed working with you. We're going to move on to trustee Luigi.
Thank you, Mayor. When I look back over the last eight years, the first thought that comes to mind is, where did the time go? So much has happened in our lives, our world, our country, and even right here in Tuckahoe. And I am so honored and privileged to have had a role in so many of the benefits and positives that we provided to our residents. However, this would not have been possible without the collaborative efforts of our talented and professional department heads, Chief John Costanza, Superintendent of Public Works, Frank DiMarco, Bill Williams, who's in charge of our building department, and Mary Ann, who always, always had the answers for me when I called. Swadish Pashnada, from the library, thank you. Judge David Fuller, the staff of our village court, Maureen Stevens, our village attorney, Gary Gerstyn. Of course, our Clerk's Office staff, Jackie Ferretti and Camille DeSalvo. Our Treasury Department, Ryan Rueter and Jim LaPerch. And of course, a key component of the everyday operations here in the village is in the hands of our village administrator, David Burke. And I'll never forget what we said, the amazing work you have done with the blank canvas we handed you so many years ago, which was only four, I believe. I thank each and every one of you for always being accessible and helpful to me in your respective areas. I've also had the privilege of working with dedicated trustees who always provided me with open discussion and different views of the issues that affected our village. Trustee Stephen Quigley, Jeanette Hayes, Steve Alfassi, and Antonio Leo. And of course, our newest trustees here on the board, Omira Andino and Danny Lang, who have brought a new and exciting presence to the village board. It is the Tuckahoe seniors who have made such a lasting impression on me. What a pleasure it has been for me to have been their liaison for the last eight years. The rich history that has been shared with me by the Tuckahoe History Committee has only deepened my appreciation for the place my family and I call home. And of course, being an assistant to the man with the red suit who visits Tuckahoe every season also brings back fond memories. And lastly, to the two gentlemen to my left, who I have had the honor to call my colleagues and friends, I thank you for your patience, your friendship, and your dedication in working to keep Tuckahoe the vibrant community it now is. I thank you for helping me to be the best I could be in my role as trustee. I'm not too sure our families will appreciate having us home more often now, but that, of course, will remain to be seen. In my last meeting as village trustee, I would like to thank Tuckahoe once again for allowing me to serve the village for the last eight years. I may be back here again next month. That decision will lie with the voters in Tuckahoe in the upcoming election. It's been a humbling experience to have served, and certainly, a milestone in my life. Good night, Tuckahoe.
Thank you, Greg. You've been a wonderful public servant. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to actually open it up to our village staff first, if any of our village staff members would like to come to the mic. We always start with the chief of police, a man that I've known since grade school.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I will limit all my comments to our departing members tonight. I will start first with our deputy mayor, Tom Giordano. Tom, you started off as liaison to the police department when you first were appointed to the board. I think we worked very well together and made some great strides within the police department. I also remember some tumultuous times when there were members of the public that came before this board and proposed some draconian cuts to the police department, which would have definitely hampered public safety in our village. And I remember myself becoming a little emotional and a little angry about the whole process, and at the time, a little disappointed in Tom, because I thought he was giving them too much credence and listening to them. But that disappointment turned to a tremendous amount of respect, because that was the first time, and it was repeated dozens of times after that. When I saw you listen to all sides of the story, to get everyone's input before making a decision, and without fail, throughout your tenure, after hearing all sides of any particular issue, you always came down on the right side and made the decision that was best for this village. So, I thank you for that. Then, as it related to the police department, I know that in your decision-making with, whether it was, you know, development projects or budgetary decisions, whatever it was, it was always in the best interests of this village, and it was always after hearing everyone's input. So, I have a tremendous amount of respect and admiration for you for that. I know that during your time as trustee, it was a balancing act between work and family and commitment to this village government. I thank you for your sacrifice. I thank your wife and your two great boys for sharing you with this village. It's a better place because of your service. I'm joined here tonight with many members of the police department in representing them and saying thank you for all that you've done for the police and for every single citizen of this village. So, thank you very much. Mayor Eklund, as you mentioned, we've known each other since elementary school, fourth grade. And one of the things that we did in, in elementary school, I think it was sixth grade, is we both participated in the school play.
You remember that, huh?
School play was Robin Hood. And I landed the role as Little John, which was the protector of the group, and you had the lead role of Robin Hood, Robin Hood, which was the leader of, of the group, of the community. And fast forward 30-plus years, and, you know, life imitating art, I became police chief, and you became mayor of this village, and...
Never thought of that.
Aside from the fact that there's a lot of people, particularly in this room, that would pay a lot of money to see you and I in fights. Your service to this village has been tremendous, first as a trustee, first as a zoning board member, and then as a trustee, and then certainly as mayor. This village has changed quite a bit in, in all the years of your service, and definitely for the better. And as a result, your leadership, again, that, you know, police department in particular, moved forward. Tough budget times, tough economic times, your support and your champion of policing and public safety never wavered. I thank you for that. I, you know, we watched your son Dylan literally grow up from a little boy to the fine young man that he is. I thank, I thank him and your wife for, again, sharing you with this village. It's sad to see you go, but I look forward to our continued friendship. I wish you godspeed in all things in the future. And again, on behalf of everyone, I thank you, Tom Giordano, and I'll save my comments for Greg for another time, but congratulations to all you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Mayor, board members, I know everybody really wants to hear about the weather and sanitation and everything else going on, but I'm not here for that tonight. So, I'd like to speak to both Tom and Steve. Tom first, you know, even with your grueling work ethics and full-time work schedule, you still found a time to serve as deputy mayor with a work ethic lost really in today's society. You've been so supportive in all our missions and believed in all that DPW you stood for. And without your support, many of our initiatives would have been just another conceptual plan, so thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Likewise.
Steve? Well, I remember both Tom and Steve 12 years ago interviewed me, and I'll never forget that evening, with the rest of the board. And Steve turned to me and said, why do you want to become the superintendent of public works? Like, in an immature way, I wanted to stand, stand up and stomp my feet and go, because I know a lot about construction, and this is what I know to do. But that wasn't the answer that the board and everybody was looking for. It wasn't about experience. It was about experience, but it was also about education. But most importantly, what I found impressive is my, for me to say to the board, and you especially, Steve, is my unwavering commitment to effectively and efficiently serve the people of Tuckahoe. And that's stuck with me ever since. And what that did tell me is that the board wanted me to serve the community as they did. So, that's stuck with me over the 12-year period. But Steve, you always believed in me, so it was so easy to pay it forward in the village. You were always there to answer my calls, my questions, my concerns, my problems. You were always there to even talk to me. You always handled yourself in a calming demeanor with the resiliency to becoming unraveled, which I found pretty impressive. You always supported and believed in all that DPW you stood for. To Tom and Steve, what many don't realize is the amount of social, civic, and personal equity associated with your titles as deputy mayor and mayor of the village of Tuckahoe. And this equity served is your personal time that would have been spent with family. You decided to spend your time here. So, there is one thing I could say with great certainty, is that I was proud to spend this time with the both of you, and I would do it again. So, enjoy whatever future endeavor lies ahead of you and with your families as well. Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Any other village staff members? I know we have a lot here, but Camille, yes, our village clerk.
Mayor Eklund, deputy mayor Giordano, on behalf of the clerk's office, Jackie and I sincerely thank you for your professionalism, patience, and dedication in serving the needs of the staff, the Tuckahoe residents, and the Tuckahoe businesses. To all the candidates, we wish you good luck on election day.
Thank you. Thank you, Camille. Thank you.
Hey, guys. So, I just, I want to thank the both of you. Without your confidence, I wouldn't be sitting here today, and the rest of the board, I really appreciate. I've learned so much doing this job. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you're going to talk about 99 Main Street? If you're not, I would like to talk to it.
I'd rather you talk about it. That's good.
So, I know about 30 years ago, you made a campaign promise that 99 Main Street, which is the boarded-up blue building, was going to be taken care of.
And I'm having you say it, because nobody believed me, right?
No. But I did get an email last week from the contractors down there, and I thought the plywood was going to be off for the meeting tonight, but apparently, I guess there was some safety issues that they're still looking into. But with your leadership, I know the, there's new owners who are local owners, there's, the village has been made financially whole, which is phenomenal, and hopefully, within the next week, that plywood will come down. So, if Greg, if you're, if you're elected mayor, you can't take credit for that. Steve's, Steve gets credit for that. But again, thank you both. I've known you forever. Tom, I've known you since we were kids. Steve, your family, you. It's not goodbye. We'll see you guys probably more now than we do now, so...
That's true. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Piece of actual business.
Ah, see that? This guy's always working.
On March 20, the tentative budget will be filed in the village clerk's office. And what I wanted to say in regards to the Treasury Department is, we have another goodbye tonight. Jim LaPerch, who is, who came to us about three and a half years ago from a great phone call from Camille gave me, said, you got to talk to this guy. He wants to help you guys out. Gave him a call, he came here, and he really helped our Treasury Department out. I think I speak for Ryan Rueter myself. Jim is leaving us next week, finally retiring after 30-plus years in Yonkers, after three-plus years with us. So, I give, I just want to say, you know, a public goodbye to Jim. Regards to the rest of the board, I have to say thank you to the three men up here. You gave me this position. You, you really provided me the opportunity to do what I wanted to do. I've never said this before, Mayor, but when the job applicant, or the job description for Tuckahoe came out, it was one of three village administrator posts that came out within the same week. Obviously, I wanted to be a village administrator. I looked at all these, I started to do my research, and the next week, a WMOA meeting came up, and you walked in with former mayor Phil White. And I saw you, and I said, I'm sitting next to that guy right there. And I had a conversation with you, and you talked my ear off about Tuckahoe, how much you love Tuckahoe, the great things that are happening in Tuckahoe, the reason why you wanted to hire a village administrator. You sold me on this place before, you know, obviously, I didn't know I was going to get an interview or the job, but I knew at that point, this was the one I wanted. So, I walked into that interview, and I felt confident, I felt good. I was a little worried about trustee Luigi, though. He gave me, he gave me some very difficult questions, but I have to just say thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I've learned an immense amount from you three men. You're all executives in your own right, where I've learned how to kind of take this position on, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you. I'm going to miss you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
So, actually, I'd like to, I know we have a few municipal representatives here, and I'd like to ask Supervisor Colavita if you wanted to say a word or two. Thank you for coming tonight, Tony.
There was a governor many, many years ago that said, it's all been said already, but not everybody's had a chance to say it yet. So, I don't want to be very repetitive, but I just want to thank you for your time that you gave to this village. The village is without question a better place as a result of your efforts. And, you know, it's funny, the other night, Steve and I, I think Tom was there also, we were attending, as Danny was, the Eastchester Irish American Social Club dinner. So, our function was to basically acknowledge the district, you know, the elected officials, and then not do proclamations, just get up there. So, as we're waiting to go on, Steve turned to me and he said, you know, this is the last time we'll be doing this together. Because I think about it, for all those years, year after year, we would be at dinners together and all, you know? And it was always a lot of fun. But think about all that time you have now. No more campaigning, no more time in village hall, no more time, you know, at people's houses, consulting them, we're having a good time, and, or, you know, just doing the dinner dancing, which is tough. So, I'm sure Dylan's very happy about that. That makes time for you guys, a lot more concerts and stuff, Mary Ann, too.
That's right.
I'm sure you guys' family as well, they'll enjoy that, too. But, you know, not that you need my approbation, but you did a magnificent job. And Tom, of course, you know, your professionalism was always present, always, always, analytical, professional, being a complete scholar, and, and your legal position has helped the village immensely. And Greg, I'm sure, I hope I'll be talking to you as mayor in a little bit of time, but your mature presence has also been an asset to the board. You guys did a great job.
Thank you, Tony.
And, you know, it's just, it's, it's hard to think you won't be there anymore, because Steve and I talk all the time. We're constantly, hey, can I borrow this? Can I take that? Can we share this? What about doing that? You know, whatever, whatever the issue is. And I'll certainly miss your presence, but, you know, the, the village will continue to go on without you, as will the town of Eastchester one day, without me. But it certainly is a better place as a result of your efforts. You guys have always had the best interests of the village at hand. So, thank you very much, and enjoy your quasi-retirement.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Appreciate that. Thank you. Luigi, do you want to say anything?
I've served Luigi a long ti, longer than anybody, I would say.
Thank you, Mayor, for, for having me tonight. And speaking of a long time, it's been about 15 years. I think we started on the zoning board together, we served as trustees together, and, and it's just the, the friendship has grown. I'm, I'm proud to call you a friend, and I've learned a lot from you, and I thank you for that. I was recently invited, I saw Dylan outside a little earlier, to Eastchester High School, to one of their high school graduating classes, to talk a little bit about the town. And as I'm talking, I look, I look around, and I see Dylan there, and I just couldn't, as I was speaking, couldn't, you know, just think, I said, wow, he was a little boy, and this is not too long ago, and how quickly time flies. And here we are today, you know, 15 years later, and he's going off to college. So, with that said, I do want to thank you, not only for everything that you've done for the village with the parks, and I think the list goes on and on, you look at Constitution Park, and, and the Main Street Park, and the Parkway Oval, and working with the town with the Parkway, with the Parkway Oval improvements. We're thankful for all that. We're thankful for the work that DPW has done, with all the different, you know, all the, all the stonework that they've done. It's just really beautiful between the brick and the Tuckahoe white marble. And, and then you look at that, you balance it against all that you gave personally, you know, with your family. And really, that's a testament to your, you know, your civic responsibility and your duty that you've given to the, to the village. So, thank you for doing that. And Tom, what can I say? You know, looking at your beautiful family here, I see your mom and dad and your entire family at church every Sunday, I see them at the farmer's market, and... and I say, you know, what wonderful people, what great people, what special people. And then I think, wow, we've got Tom Giordano as our trustee, our deputy mayor. And we're just so fortunate to have someone like you on this board. So thank you, the police chief. We was talking a little bit about how important public safety is. We all agree, and we thank you for keeping our village safe, keeping our village beautiful. And we know that you're going to have a very successful career, and you're going to have some more time with the family, and you deserve that. Thank you for all that you've done. Greg, thank you as well. And that's all I have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
One more thing, if I could. Lake Isle, we, everyone in the village should have gotten their Lake Isle membership application in the mail. Please join. It's a wonderful club. I come here every year, and I say that, and I didn't want to, you know, miss out this year. But this year, we're going to be able to register online as well. We're working on that. So there's no reason why everyone shouldn't, shouldn't apply and, and join. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask my good friend from Bronxville, our mayor, Mary Marvin, if, she's probably tired, because I know it was a very late night last night, so. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much.
I actually left mid-meeting of my meeting, but I left people who were angry with me.
That's a good reason to leave. Perfect.
I just had to come, and Tom, just much good luck. This has been, it's been fabulous to work with all of you. And, you know, especially my buddy Steve, we've worked together, you've been 18 years in government, and I've been, you know, the same kind of number, and we've worked together. And just last night, emailed me twice to see what other help he could give to Bronxville. I mean, that's sort of who you are, and we have developed incredible cooperation between the villages. And, and to my great joy, an incredible friendship. And I admire you greatly. I knew you cared about Tuckahoe first. It was always about Tuckahoe, and I considered you a steward of the community. And I will just miss you greatly. And, and our good laughs, we shared, sometimes we needed to remind each other to have a sense of humor. And so I just couldn't miss saying, "Thank you. Thank you for being such a wonderful friend and a wonderful neighbor, and it's an honor to know you."
Oh, thank you, Mary. I cherish our friendship. That's a classy lady right there. Steve, did you want to say anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Steve. Thank you, all of you. Like Tony said, it's all been said. But I just want to congratulate both Danny and Omira for great speeches, really wonderful speeches. And I was speaking with a friend tonight, and we said, "Well, we're going to say goodbye to Steve, and we're going to say goodbye to Tom, but what do we say about Greg?" Because Greg, obviously, is running for mayor. But I can say that I served on the board with all three of you, and it was truly my honor, truly my pleasure. You guys talked me off cliffs more than one time, and hopefully, I talk to you off a cliff once or in a while. But it's been my pleasure and honor, and it's certainly my honor to call you all three my friends.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor Mike, the man who started it all for me. I served with him on the zoning board.
Yeah, we go way back. That's great. You have, listen, I've heard all the accolades, all well-deserved. I just want to share one thing with you. You're going to have lifestyle changes. One in particular that I experienced, you will experience. Tonight, you guys, Mayor Steve, Deputy Mayor Tom, Greg, we'll talk later. But you look at your calendar, and you say, "Gee, what night am I going to be home this week?" After tonight, you're going to say, "Gee, what night am I going to be out?" So I think that's important, and it underscores everything. Like I said, you've done a great job, all of you, and I wish you well in your future endeavors. Retire a little bit. Tom, I know you're not going to retire much, but go out there, spend more time with your family. Congratulations. Job well done by all of you. I wish you the best. Greg, all the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I'm happy to call you mayor, and I'm told that they'll call me mayor forever, too. So that's wonderful. At this point, anybody from the public at all like to come up and say a word? Yes, sir?
I would like to say that you all have been given a gift, and the gift is public service. So keep that in mind, that it's something that you treasure, something that you keep before you and that you share with the members of your community, because it is a gift, and that generosity of spirit makes it come alive, and it's a great thing for the community and for your family.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Mike Giordano from Chestnut Street, Tuckahoe. I'm not going to say all the other stuff everyone said, because it's already been said. I'm also someone who has opposed some of the things that you, we've kind of battled over, but one thing I think is important is that we always show each other respect. And Tom, one thing that I'll never forget was when, in 2017, after the whole thing with the brownfield happened, and you sort of did a summary about how you saw the whole process. You complimented me on the fact that, you know, I was who-come-and-collected and trying to be even-handed about this. And I, we don't do these things to get accolades, but I appreciate that. And, and Mayor, you've always given me my time to speak and shown respect. I think that's important. I think all these, this left and right stuff is crazy, and even though we've been opponents on stuff, we haven't been enemies, and I think that's important. So I want to thank you. I also want to thank you because it's tough to do this. This isn't easy. I thought it was easy until I started getting in, and I'm like, gosh, this is hard even to be on the environmental committee. It's hard. Also, I wanted to say to you, to show you respect tonight, I shaved and shaved my head. I wore my Tuckahoe shirt.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
I'm Tony Fiori, Midland Place. I just want to say best of luck to Steve, Tom, Greg. And Steve, I just wanted to thank you for making me an ad hoc member of the zoning board. Still learning a lot, a lot here. There's a lot to learn.
There is.
Just wanted to say best of luck. Good luck with everything, Greg.
Thank you. So we're going to kind of round towards home plate, and now we're going to actually hear from my and your deputy mayor, Mr. Tom Giordano. He has some final thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor Steve. With a few flagrant exceptions, I have tried over the last nine years to keep my comments brief. I ask you to indulge me for a few extra minutes this evening. I've been reading a book by Daniel Brown. It's called The Boys in the Boat. Many of you may have heard of it. But those of you who may be unfamiliar, it tells the true story of a journey of a group of students from the University of Washington in the 1930s, some who came from situations of incredible adversity, who ended up rowing crew. And at first, they received some national recognition for their, for their efforts. And after that, in 1936, they ended up winning Olympic gold in Berlin before the Fuhrer Adolf Hitler, who had tried to set up that particular Olympics as a way to show Germany's inevitability and invincibility. As I looked in the book, there are some pictures of Washington State in the 1920s and 1930s, and some remind me of the photos we have out front of Tuckahoe during that time. It was a bit rundown, a little rough and ramshackle, a lot of bordering on the impoverished. It's amazing to think of how far we've come since that time and the era of prosperity that we've all lived in. Anyway, it's a terrific story, but I, the reason that I mention it is because it gives a great description about the sport of crew itself and what it takes to be a great oarsman or great oarswoman. And I'm going to beg you for the, to read a quote from it. "The greatest paradox that the sport has to do with is the psychological makeup of the people who pull the oars. Great oarsmen and oarswomen are necessarily made up of conflicting stuff. On the one hand, they must possess enormous self-confidence, strong egos, and Titanic willpower. They must be almost immune to frustration. And yet, at the same time, and this is key, no other sport demands and rewards the complete abandonment of the self, the way that rowing does. Great crews may have men or women of exceptional talent or strength. They may have outstanding coxswains or stroke oars or bowmen, but they have no stars. The team effort, the perfectly synchronized flow of muscle, oars, boat, and water, the single whole unified and beautiful symphony that a crew in motion becomes, is all that matters, not the individual, not the self. These nine years, I've been surrounded by so many people who fit this description, both our trustees and those who serve our community as part of our village's operations, people committed to their service and whose legacies and the legacies that they leave behind, committed to the greater good and to the betterment of a community, people who place their success based on how they are able to make a positive impact on those around them. I'd like to take this time to single out a few of them individually, albeit not all of them. First, I'd like to acknowledge Chief Costanzo and the members of the TP, Tuckahoe Police Department. John, your professionalism and leadership are inspirational. You set such a high standard for your team, and invariably, they meet those expectations. And in so doing, you've created a police department that, that not only is made up of men and women who are engaged and integrated in our community, but they also make us feel so safe day and night, and that is remarkable. The other thing is, and we've earned so many awards as being one of the safest communities to live in Westchester, which is terrific. And over the years, I'm so happy that some of the members of our police department are here today, because I've grown so fond of you and them individually. So you have my great respect and admiration. On the note of respect and admiration, Frank and your DPW, Frank DiMarco, the work of you and your team are the pride of our residents and the envy of the neighboring municipalities, and I'm sure you know that. You have forgotten about more, more about infrastructure than I have ever learned, and I have learned so much just listening to you each month at your meetings. The work that you and your staff do to keep our village beautiful and functioning well is remarkable. Thank you. Our judges Fuller and O'Toole for keeping the decorum of our village, for meeting out justice that may be blind but is not bereft of compassion and grace. David, the establishment of the necessary position of village administrator was sound policy of the board. It's been a great fortune that we had selected you as our administrator. You have competence well beyond your years and an unassailable integrity and professionalism. I hope you find Tuckahoe the home of your career for years and decades to come. Thank you. Ryan Rueda, in the few years I've gotten to know you, I've come to know you as a true gentleman, who, who under the guidance of Jim LaPerch is growing into a capable municipal treasurer. Thanks to both of you for cleaning up and turning around our Treasury Department. We really appreciate it. Gary, Gary, as you mentioned, we've known each other since we were children, and I value your friendship as well as the sound advice you've given us over the years. Thank you so much. Camille, you're true blue. You're professional and poised, but never beyond sharing a smile, a good story, a good laugh. In Italian, we would say, "You are troppo simpatica." And Jackie, Jackie, thank you for being the friendly and helpful face greeting our residents and us every day, and all the things you do to make the experience of being in Tuckahoe and our local government better. And I can tell you that my wife Suzanne thinks you're terrific as well. Thank you. Swadeesh, for all you've done for our library, you have truly transformed a humble space with books in it into a place of learning and development in such creative ways. Thank you. Bill Williams, who is not here today, is not, does not have an easy role, and while the public serve, the public may not always appreciate his savoir faire, his knowledge and competence are beyond question. And Mary Ann McCann's helpful demeanor, and Mike Seminaro's as well, have helped to smooth out those rough edges. Thank you. Thank you both. John Galuzzi, also not able to make it here this evening, I would like to recognize John and all that he's done to improve our community center and recreation department. The center is now immaculate, well-maintained, well-organized, brings more revenue to the village, and offers more opportunities as a place where we build community. I hope in the years ahead, we can plan to further enhance the facility and make it even better. And most of all, John, the best on your road to full recovery. Wayne, thank you for filming us so diligently every week. I know you're back there somewhere. We certainly appreciate your quiet support. And I'd like to speak to our, a few words to our board. Omira, it's been a pleasure to get to know you and work with you over the year. I appreciate your intelligence, your spirit, and your generosity. You add a new dimension and perspective to this board that's been welcome and very much appreciated. Thank you. Danny, I think you have the largest heart on our board and perhaps in our village. I've witnessed some of your many acts of kindness. I remember one day, we went into Villaggio, and we're just ordering a slice of pizza in between meetings, and several young men walked in to order pizza, and Danny just said, "You know, I think I'm going to take care of these gentlemen's dinner tonight," not knowing them. And that wasn't obvious, and you're never obvious. You're not obvious with the Thanksgiving turkeys for Ecap, the roof you put on our veterans' facility, the list goes on and on. And you talk about inspiration. In my mind, what you do inspires others and makes them better, certainly me. Greg, the same goes for you. From, from your commitment to our seniors, to your work as a docent at the World Trade Center Memorial Museum, to yours and Diane's work to help those children stricken with a disease through the Paul Luizzi Foundation, you've truly demonstrated yourself as a man for others. These years have also seen you develop into a capable leader and ardent promoter of sound policy. You truly have the best interests of our village in every, and heart in everything you do. I've truly enjoyed our time together, especially that time trudging through the cold on the campaign trail, although I can't say I very much miss it this year. Godspeed in the coming election.
Thank you.
Skipping for a second. Town supervisor Tony Colavita and the Eastchester Town Board, many of whom I still hear, Glenn, Teresa, and Luigi, thank you for all of your support and guidance throughout the years. It's been so important to us and so appreciated. Thank you, and for being here tonight. I also want to acknowledge those trustees with whom I've had the privilege of serving over the years, Claire Gorman, John Fitzpatrick, Steve Alfassi, Antonio Leo, Jeanette Hayes, and a special remembrance for Steve Quigley, who was a dear colleague and who we miss on our board and in our community. Steve was a shining example of transcending any type of rancor along partisan lines and focusing on that which unites us. We need more like him in this board. A special thanks to my parents, Carolyn and Vito, who instilled in me by example the importance of service to others, my mother, who taught me the love of reading, and my father, the art of public speaking. I am so blessed to have them both here tonight. I'm also blessed to have my Aunt Laura, my nephew Vito, my nieces Carolina, Camila, Valentina, and Benedetta, and my sisters Maria and Greta. Oh, and Lucia, my goddaughter Lucia. How could I forget you? And of course, my lovely wife Suzanne, my sons Thomas and Andrew, who were here with me on the evening I was sworn in, are here today and have been supporting me from the first day to the last, making many sacrifices along the way. I remember holding each of my boys, one in each arm, nine years ago when I was sworn in. I'm not sure I would be able to do that today. But apart from the demands of my job, it's my desire But apart from the demands of my job, it's my desire to spend more time with them in the years ahead that is my main driver for my decision. I reflect, Steve, on the many things that have been accomplished. Financially, we're in much better shape than when we started. We have a healthy fund balance, sound strategies for managing long-term debt to finance capital improvements. We've maintained the quality of our services while protecting against tax increases, in most years not exceeding the 2% tax cap. We've set in motion the necessary improvement of the village administrator to manage the affairs of the village in a way no part-time boy, board could, and mayor could and should ever do, resulting in a crucial asset to enact policy, set benchmarks. We've seen major developments that have improved our village, and we've been written up as a great, a great place to live by the Wall Street Journal and New York Times. After all, Tuckerho is a great place to live. Which brings me last, and certainly not least, the individual to thank, our great mayor and my friend, Steve Eklund. By all accounts, Steve is an astute businessman and an indeatigable worker, and the examples of the progress in our village I just mentioned are only a few of the board's accomplishments under his leadership, but is also his generosity of spirit, friendly and respectful manner always, that I have come to admire most. I can't think of another who has better embodied the heritage and spirit of our village than Yesterday, I had the pleasure of marching in Eastchester's St. Patrick's Day Parade honoring the great-grand marshal Pat Murtagh. As we made our way along the route through the village as, for the last time as a village trustee, for now, I thought about what a great privilege and pleasure it has been to spend these past years in the boat with each of you accomplished oarsmen and oarswomen. Thank you all for all you have done, and may you and those that come after us continue to row swiftly ahead and always on course. Thank you.
So I'm gonna lighten it up. That's why he's the smart guy, you know, that's why I get the credit for picking the smart guy. You know what? You surround yourself with brilliant people, it makes you look a lot smarter than you really are, so. Well, we've covered a lot of road over the past 15 years. Most of my time in office, I've passed on writing newspaper articles or making long speeches, but tonight, I'm gonna make up for some lost ground, so please make yourselves just a little comfortable and indulge me just for one last time. This is my 252nd village board meeting, and I can now breathe a sigh of relief because in all these years, I've had the good fortune to have never missed or been absent from a village board meeting. It took a lot of hard work and compromising, not just by me, but by my family, my work family at New York Ladder and Scaffolding, and my colleagues on the board to keep that perfect attendance record. So there's a lot of people that I wanna thank tonight, but I'm not gonna be so redundant because we'll be here till midnight. But first, I wanna thank my wife, Mary Ann, and my son Dylan, who is here with us tonight. My wife couldn't make it, she's actually at her home in Florida tonight, waiting for me tomorrow, I'll be there. Both of them had to endure countless evening and weekend absences of my attending meetings or other village-related business. This job isn't just one meeting a month, so for all of the family dinners, birthdays, and other gatherings missed, the sacrifice that the whole family makes to support a family member who steps up and gives back to their community is recognized and appreciated. My son Dylan was only two years old when I was first sworn into office, so he's never really known what it's like to not have a dad in public office. But I have to think that maybe all those years and times he attended either a police memorial service, a library event, a veteran ceremony, a public meeting here at Village Hall, or just marching with me in the parade, may have provided him with a sense of community and service that he may not have had otherwise. Dylan has grown, as everyone knows him now, he's grown up to be the finest young man that I could ever have hoped for, so thank you. So my journey here at Village Hall started back on January 12th, 2004, when Mayor Mike Martino appointed me as trustee to the village board to fill Sheila Markot's vacancy. At that time, Sheila was appointed to the town board by Supervisor Calavita, and I was sworn in by my old neighbor, Judge Michael O'Toole. Shortly afterwards, I ran for office of village trustee with Maria McHugh, and we both were elected to the board in March 2004. Over the years, I had the pleasure to serve on the board with 17 dedicated members. Mayor Mike Martino is with us here tonight, thank you, Mike. Deputy Mayor Tony Syag, trustees PJ Denning, not many people even remember that, actually. Luigi Marcoshia's been here all these years, Maria McHugh, Mayor John Fitzpatrick, trustees Claire Gorman, Ernie Zaki, Margaret Coleman, Steve Quigley, and our deputy mayor, Tom Giordano, and trustees Jeanette Hayes, Greg Luizzi, Steve Alfassi, Antonio Leo, Danny Lang, and Omira Andino. I had the good fortune to have been elected and re-elected to office eight times, and fortunately, never lost an election, although there were a few that were very, very close. One was as close as seven votes, I remember that. So there have been a lot of events and accomplishments that I am proud to have been a part of over these years, and I just wanna name a couple of them. The naming and dedication of the Gold Star Mothers Memorial Bridge, which was, used to be known as the Main Street Bridge. The renaming of our post office, the Ronald Bucha Post Office, Mayor Mike was instrumental in getting that done, and I was honored to be part of that. The renaming and dedication of Lower Dante Avenue to the Medal of Honor recipient Staff Sergeant Robert C. Murray Way. I was so happy to do that, it was way overdue, and I'm glad that we were able to get that done. The Crestwood Streetscape Phase Two and Three Project, including putting the overhead utility lines underground, that is a real challenge if you ever have that opportunity to do a project like that. The design and construction of the Cameron Place Parking Lot, which is right outside the window here, this is a small piece of land, mostly all rock, that most people said could never be broken, and we worked it out, and we made it a parking lot for about 18 to 20 cars. Mike was the mayor back then, and everyone said it would never happen. It was one of the first projects I worked on as a village trustee. The new DPW office and the rehabilitation of the entire complex down there. If anyone has been here for 20 years or more, they remember what a wreck the old building was before we tore it down. I was very happy to provide much nicer living conditions for the DPW staff down there. Another project, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Yonkers Avenue Project, although it turned out to be much longer than everyone expected, myself included, and that was mainly because the federal government was required to hire the lowest responsible bear, who turned out to be the lowest unresponsible bear. But what the public really doesn't know is that how close that roadway was to actually sliding into the Bronx River. I mean, it was, I'm not gonna say days away, but it was imminent. And let me tell you, if that roadway had fallen into the river, that road would be closed today, I guarantee you that. So that was a very, very important project in the village. The overhaul and design of the Stirket Avenue Park, I put a lot of time into that project working with the CDBG program. The design and creation of the Station Plaza Park in Crestwood, which we just finished. Working with Mayor Mike and his administration, bringing back fireworks year after year to Parkway Oval, along with all the other great community events like our annual Easter egg hunt and the Christmas Time Winter Fest event, which started out with just a couple of us decorating the old abandoned Tuckerho Ticket Train Station, and back then, we called it Tuckerho Ho Ho. That was a lot of fun, a lot of great memories. Bringing back the Tuckerho Police Motorcycle Unit was very special to me, which had last put motorcycles on our streets over 50 years ago. That was very important to me, and it wouldn't have been possible if it weren't for the generosity of David Pope and his family foundation. It was one of the things he asked me when I first took office as mayor, he said, so what would you like? And I said, well, we need a check because I'd like to go ahead and start. I'm a Harley guy most of my life, and I said, I think it'd be pretty cool if we had a motor unit, so, and he stepped up and wrote the check, so I wanted to thank him for that. One of the more stressful accomplishments was immediately after I became the mayor and I found out that the Rollins Insurance Agency, who occupied the entire top floor of Village Hall, was moving out. So landing and working with the Andrus Early Childhood Center was a blessing in that they not only put close to $1 million of their money into this building, they occupy the entire top floor and half of the ground floor of this building, and they also contribute a quarter million dollars a year in rent, so that's a pretty good deal for the residents. Took a lot of work, a lot of work was put into that with our former mayor, former attorney, John Cavallaro, who was a wonderful attorney, worked for the village for years, and he and I worked endless amount of hours on that. But clearly, the most important event or accomplishment wasn't really an event, but it was a great accomplishment, and that was the creation of the position of village administrator in May of 2014. From the time I first got on this board, I, being a small business owner, I always felt that there lacked that one position, and it was the glue that keeps it all together in village government, the one person who can carry out and implement the thoughts and plans of the mayor and the village board. Having this central person has been the most significant change to the efficiency and accountability of village operations in all of my years on the board, and I maintain that we really hit a home run when we offered the position to David Burke, and he said yes. And actually, I didn't know that story about you were sitting next to me at the WMAA meeting, so that was nice to hear that. So I've been asked many, many times over the past month, you know, what is the best and the worst of the time that I've been in office, because I've been on the board a long time? So it's a tough question to answer, but I would say that the worst memory that I have on this board was on Thursday, April 30th, 2015, when I received a call from our chief, John Costanza, that our colleague on the board, trustee Steve Quigley, had suffered a fatal cardiac event at his office that day. Steve is only 62 years old, very young, and he was one of the kindest and finest gentlemen that I had the pleasure to know. So that was a terrible time for all of us. And I think, you know, thinking about it, I would say that, believe it or not, the best memory was my first election victory with Maria McHugh. It was, we have some new candidates who are in the room here tonight, and you know what? You always remember that first campaign, all the walking you do, it's all new to you, and we had a lot of fun back then. We spent more time in Rockwell's, I think, than we did, than I was home. We had so many meetings back then at Rockwell's, and it was just a different spirit, and it was, it was a lot of fun, and for me, it was just great to meet a new group of people, and that's really a very, very fond memory of mine. So my good memory takeaway from my time in office is gonna be the great friendships that I've made here. Elected offices is a big departure from my life in the private sector, and serving in office introduced me to so many wonderful and kind people. But the men and women who work for the village across all departments are who I'm gonna miss the most. Maybe it's because Tuckero is such a small village, or maybe it's because there's so many multi-generation families, some who work for the village, but it's clear that the people who work for the village go the extra mile in their respective jobs, and they truly care for the village of Tuckero. So as a resident, I really appreciate that. I wanna thank my friends and colleagues who came here tonight to wish us well. Please know that I will always be grateful for your friendship and indebted to you for your help to me in my public service career. I wanna thank Danny and Omira for your service to our community, and I wanna thank Greg, who has worked on this board for eight years, and if, Greg, if you're successful in getting to sit in this chair in a week from tomorrow, I have confidence that you will direct this board with the steady and logical wisdom that you've shown all of us all these years.
Thank you, Steve.
And to Tom, my right-hand man right here, I have the utmost respect for you as a professional, a dad, and a public servant. You've helped me many more times than you know. Everybody appreciates it. So it's been an honor to serve with you. Sorry about that. So everyone asks me, and Tom, I think your mom asked me tonight, what am I gonna do with all my free time? Well, for starters, in about 12 hours from now, I'm gonna be getting on a plane heading for Daytona Beach to spend the next week riding my Harley at Bike Week. So after a couple of cold beers down on Main Street, I think I'll just figure it all out. Let's hope. I know.
Mine's all wet.
Yeah, Danny, we thought you were gonna be the crier tonight. Sorry about that. So with that, for the last time, I will say, there being no other business tonight. Oh, we do, we have business tonight?
So we have, we have some, we have some plaques to present to the mayor as well as trustee Luizzi and Giordano, so I will let you go first, and then I will do...
On behalf of a grateful community, we would like to thank Deputy Mayor Tom Giordano in appreciation for his dedicated service, positive contributions as a Village of Tuckero Deputy Mayor and Trustee, presented by Mayor Steve Eklund and Board of Trustees.
Also, on behalf of the grateful community, we would like to thank trustee Greg Luizzi in appreciation for his dedicated service and positive contributions as Village of Tuckero trustee, presented by Mayor Steve Eklund, Board of Trustees.
And I will present the mayor with his plaque. On behalf of a grateful community, we would like to thank Mayor Stephen A. Eklund in appreciation for his dedicated service and positive contributions as Village of Tuckero Mayor and Trustee, presented by Board of Trustees on March 2019. And for those who would like to see, this is what the plaque looks like. So we have one more order of business.
Greg, first order of business is to fix these big chairs.
You got the...
Oh, my goodness.
I'm taking the door home, okay? David, is that allowed? He's taking the door? Oh, okay. Wow, thank you. That's very kind, very gracious of you. So with that, for the last time, I will say, with there being no other business tonight, I... I, Mayor Stephen A. Eklund, will make a motion to adjourn this, my final village board meeting. And do I have a second for this motion? Do we meet again, Tuckahoe? Have a very good evening.